Everybody who's joined this meeting and watching live elsewhere. To ensure that this meeting runs as smoothly as possible, all participants will be muted and can only be unmuted by the town clerk on my instruction. Those councillors wishing to speak during the meeting should click on the blue digital hand to raise their virtual hand. The town clerk will then assist me with the order of debate as we can consider tonight's agenda items. Should there be any disruption to the meeting, the individual will be warned once by myself and if the disruption continues, I will ask the town clerk to remove them from the meeting. Those being removed will not be permitted to re-enter. Virtual meetings will be recorded and livestreamed and therefore should you not wish for your image to be recorded, please turn your camera off now. So can I, can I just check please, can all councillors be muted? Andrew, thank you. Thank you.
Chairman, you just need to unmute yourself.
Thank you. Okay, so I'd now like to begin the meeting, starting with number six on the four information page, the recording of the meeting. So this meeting is being recorded and screened live on Facebook. So public participation, members of the public will be given an opportunity to address councillors present at the meeting regarding agenda items at the discretion of the chair. Members of the public will also be given an opportunity to discuss town council activities, not under current agenda, after the close of the meeting. The comments of members of the public and electors of the parish who speak before the start of the meeting or following the close of the meeting will not form part of the minutes of the meeting. Okay. So do we have any members of the public joining us at this meeting who wish to comment on any of the items on the agenda, who wish to speak now?
We do have somebody joining by telephone, chairman. I've just asked if they'd like to unmute and advise.
Thank you. So do we have a member of the public who'd like to, to speak to us before, before the start of our meeting?
It doesn't appear that they wish to unmute, chairman.
Okay, okay, thank you. So turning over the page then, item one, apologies for absence.
None, chairman.
Excellent, we've got a full house. Thank you. So agreement of the agenda between parts one and part two. We do have a, a part two on the agenda this evening. I can see that councillor Wiggley has raised his little hand. Councillor Wiggley, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I, I just am a little confused at the part two item because it's unclear what it's going to be about. And I would just like to check what the legal basis is for it being in a part two session, please.
Thank you councillor Wiggley. Andrew, would you like to respond to that, please?
Yeah, thank you, chairman. I think this was discussed at the December meeting and members were made aware that the police were in attendance and it may be that they wish to discuss case by case specifics, which could obviously not be discussed in a public session. So that's why the item's been placed in part two.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Andrew. I can't see any other blue hands raised. So could I ask for councillors to show by, by raising a physical hand whether they agree with the agenda between parts one and two? All councillors, please raise, raise a hand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Accepted, thank you. So declarations of interest, to declare any disclosable interest relating to the forthcoming items of business, please. So blue hands, I can see councillor Wiggley, please go ahead.
Yeah. As the portfolio holder at Teambridge with the responsibility for housing, homelessness comes under my portfolio. Without knowing what we're going to be talking about, I would propose that I talk at the, in the session, since I have a knowledge of the area. And depending if there's any votes or anything else, take, take consideration as to whether it's relevant at that time to consider whether voting or not.
Thank you councillor Wiggley. So to ask for councillors' approval or acceptance of that declarations of interest?
Just for information, chairman.
Okay, sorry, sorry. So we, we note that declaration, any other, I can't see any other blue hands raised. So I'll, I'll take it. That, that's, that's it for that. Thank you. So item number four, dispensations, to receive and consider any requests for dispensation.
None, chairman.
Thank you. Minutes of last year's town council meeting, the last one in December, you all have seen them that have been circulated with the meeting papers. So this is to approve, sign and adopt those minutes. Can I ask for all councillors in favour of approving and adopting those minutes to please raise a hand? Excellent. Thank you. Excellent. So then item number six, minutes of committees for adoption. So to receive the minutes of the planning committee, that was planning committee, two meetings actually, held on the 12th of November and the 3rd of December. Could I ask the chair of the planning committee, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I'd like to present the minutes for the planning committee on the 12th of November and the 3rd of December for acceptance by this full council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Goodrun Bradbury. Can I ask all councillors in favour, please to raise a hand?
Thank you.
Excellent, full house. Thank you. Okay, item number seven then, town clerk's report.
Thank you, chairman, and happy new year to all members. It doesn't seem that long ago that back in December, we were talking about coming out of lockdown towards the end of December and here we are in January, having gone into not only a lockdown but a national one. So in that respect, the manor house has been closed to inquiries to the public as before, but the building remains open for hire for exempt activities, which includes education and training, support groups, weddings and funerals, and that's about it. So it's fairly few and far between. The brook lights were turned on at the start of December and will remain on until the end of February, as per the agreement with Teambridge. We are aware that there have been some technical issues with certain elements of the brook. We know that tucks plot invariably does not switch on. We do also know that there's another couple of parts of the brook in itself that have gone and we think it's because they're being tripped. And as per the agreement, there will be no maintenance in rectifying that at the current time, but they are wrong. Teambridge is undergoing its budget consultation. I believe the executive there considered the draft proposals on Tuesday or yesterday and a survey will be going out shortly. So that will be available on Teambridge's website if members want to keep abreast of what those proposals are. And obviously that also leads into our own budget considerations, which are ongoing and will hopefully arrive at a budget decision on the 27th of January. So just a reminder for your diaries there. And finally, the helping Dawlish collaboration is obviously back up and running. We had a meeting yesterday. I think we're in a better place than we were last year. We've obviously learned from what went on. We've had a good few successful projects that hugs in a bag over the Christmas period have been very successful and donations have been very kindly given. I think it's going to be a bit of a delay to any initial impact on the service, but until lockdown starts to bind, hopefully people will now know what it's like to be in lockdown and have different means in place for helping themselves. But obviously Helping Dawlish is there to help, should that be needed. Information's available at www.helpingdawlish.co.uk. Angie, would you like to say anything as the projects officer on that? Is that okay?
I, I think that's okay. Is, is it possible to say that the hugs in a bag, we delivered 110 hugs to people in bags. They were delivered by the specials through our links with the police and we've had some lovely thank you letters. And I believe the mayor councillor Foden gave a quote to the Dawlish Gazette on how successful the, the project was.
Thank you very much, Andrew. Thank you, Angie. Thank you for your reports. Councillor Morehead, I see you've got your hand, your blue hand raised. Did you have a question? Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, just regarding the brook lights. Am I right in saying to our clerk, I, do I remember rightly that although if there are faults, Timbridge will not come automatically and deal with them, but we can request them to, although of course we would then end up, well, I've seen it in one of the minutes somewhere or one of the items, but we would obviously be liable for costs. I'm just trying to refresh memory, but I'm sure I've seen that somewhere.
Thank you councillor Morehead.
Chair, I think the projects officer would like to come in there.
Okay, thank you, Andrew. Angie, please go ahead.
If I may, council agreed the work would not take place. However, what happened four times prior to Christmas was when the tucks plot lights tripped. We asked Teambridge on their normal round, so there would not be a cost incurred to go and re-trip the lights to see if they would work. And they came on three of the four times. The latest loss, which is three sections down, rather gaze creamery section, would require, as I understand it, potentially more substantial works. And that was the agreement, not to carry out anything further. But they have done as a courtesy measure, in all fairness to the offices at Teambridge, three circuits for us before Christmas to try and ensure they were at their best possible condition.
Excellent. Thank you, Angie. Thanks for that information. Okay, so then moving on to the mayor's announcements, so my reports. So happy, happier and healthy new year to you all. The start of this new year brings with it the optimism and hope of a better year. The exciting news of another vaccine, this time from the University of Oxford and AstraZeneca, together with the Pfizer vaccine, gives us hope that we can fight the COVID-19 virus. What we have achieved in Dawlish and our parish, I'm really happy and truly grateful for all who have volunteered to helping their neighbours and friends and to helping our communities. And thank you to all the volunteers and organisations that are working together as helping Dawlish. A big thank you to all of our key workers, to the scientists who are working on these vaccines, to all staff in the NHS and pharmacies, in care homes, teachers, farmers, logistics workers, local shops and businesses and supermarket staff. In the run-up to Christmas, Dawlish looked fantastic with all the Christmas trees, lights, shop windows, and with the nativity scene and a Christmas tree on the lawn too, and the late night shopping nights. Thank you to all the traders and to our projects officer for her help with organising this. On Christmas Day, I helped with delivering Christmas dinners cooked by volunteers at the Strand Centre and together with bags of presents, I delivered these to vulnerable and isolated people in Dawlish. Thank you to all of our volunteers who will be assisting our projects officer with the car parking and vaccination marshalling for the Barton surgery during the next few weeks of vaccination rollout here in Dawlish. I wish you all a very best for 2021, for a happier and healthy year. Stay safe and remember the hands, face and space. Thank you. Okay, councillor Pals, I see you've got your hand raised. Is it a question for my report? Please go ahead.
No, it's just to tell you that I've been warned that the internet is unstable. So I don't know how long I shall be with you, but I've just had it flashed across my screen. I don't know if anybody else has.
Okay, thank you councillor Pals. Thank you. Okay, so moving on then to item number nine, county councillors' report. So the report from councillor John Clappworthy has been circulated with our papers and I'm sure you've all, you've all had a chance to have a look at that. Are there, I can't see any blue hands raised for any questions to do with that. So if there aren't any, councillor Heath, please go ahead.
Sorry, the screen went weird. Yeah, it's only a little update that John Clappworthy emailed me to do with the Devon County Council highways. Remember, I think it was the last full meeting, we asked for an inspection for, to have a look, a request for double right lines by the brow of the hill by the smugglers for the unsafe road. It seemed to have, nobody knows why, it seems it's not got to Devon County Council. He pinged me an email because it also came to me, I'm quite sure why. Anyway, he said, oh, I can put it back onto the list for Helen to look at. So I obviously, we've already agreed it. So yes, so hopefully the rest of you are happy with that because we did agree anyway. So hopefully it's going to go on the next schedule to be inspected. But John Clappworthy hasn't put it in the report because it missed that bit. It's only just happened. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much for that. Thank you councillor Morehead. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, it's a very interesting report and I'm really pleased to see in particular one or two items in it, which I would just draw attention to for those who are watching us and who might not have looked it up. One concerns the school meals which were delivered, have been delivered. But the, the main one I'm interested, particularly pleased about is that the communities minister, Patrick Jenrick, has abandoned the planning algorithm approach on housing numbers. Because I believe, and I'm sure I can be corrected by councillor Gary Taylor in particular, but it was being, we were liable to be having our housing numbers doubled for Timbridge under that algorithm. So I'm really relieved to see that's happened. I just wanted to draw attention to that. I think it's a bit of good news. Well, I hope it is. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Morehead. Thank you. Are there any other questions relating to this report? Councillor Taylor, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, just to respond to the comment from councillor Morehead. Yes, the, the algorithm has, there's been a U-turn by government on the, on the housing numbers. The, the new algorithm that they, that would have, would have imposed 1,532 houses a year on, on, on Teambridge has, has been binned just before Christmas. I, I personally can't think of a better Christmas present from, from Mr Jenrick and very pleased that we're, well, pleased as, as I can be about the numbers that we are, that we are returning to. We, the, the, the formula is now reverts to the original one. The, the data point, it moves on 12 months. So instead of 760, we have a reduction to 758. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Taylor. Thank you. So do all the councillors approve that we accept that report? Please raise a hand. Excellent, thank you. So then moving on to district councillors' reports and thank you to those councillors who've circulated their report that has been sent round with the pack. So we've had the report from councillor Pals. Thank you. Any, any questions? Yes, councillor Wiggley, please go ahead.
Sorry, I wasn't wanting to ask a question on, on the other reports. I'll put my hand down for a moment. I was waiting for a verbal report.
Oh, right. Okay, thank you. Sorry, I am, I've missed, I've jumped from district councillors' reports to town councillors' reports. So that's my, that's my error, trying to concentrate on too many things at once. So thank you councillor Pals for your reports. We'll go back to district councillors' reports and councillor Wiggley, you did have your blue hand raised. So please, if you wish to, please, please go ahead now.
Thank you. Yes, I didn't want to do a lot, a lot of reporting, but I wanted to mention three things. Our clerk mentioned that the budget process has started. So that is, is good. It's a challenging time, given the loss of income from car parks and all the other bits and pieces. So it is going to be some challenging times ahead with the budget from Teambridge. Also to note that the executive meeting this week retained the 100% council tax relief scheme, which is excellent news for people in trouble. They can gain 100% relief on their council tax. And thirdly, to note that the Teambridge has rapidly moved into lockdown mode and is setting itself up ready for the new grant schemes coming through. And I'm sure those will be done as efficiently as the grant schemes for, for businesses and for those in need were done last time. So it was a, a rapid turnaround. But I'd also like to, to thank our staff here at Dawlish for doing the same thing and going into rapid turnaround and into the lockdown mode. I know it's not easy to suddenly adjust when such things are springed upon, sprung upon us. So I'd like to thank, thank all the team for, for their rapid action to get us into that, that new mode.
Thank you very much councillor Wiggley. Thank you. Do we have any questions for, for your reports, for councillor Wiggley's reports? Or thank you. So are we all, all in favour of noting councillors' Wiggley's reports, please? Thank you. Okay, so I can't see any other hands raised from other district councillors. Okay, thank you. So moving on then to town councillors' reports. So I was just noting before councillor Pals has already circulated her report. Councillor Pals, do you wish to speak? Do you wish to speak about your reports?
I was just going to remind everybody that my report was written before the lockdown. And of course, you can expect further updates from me about the network rail. They seem to be coming through very fast at the moment. So, but I will continue to send out to everybody. I'm assuming, although we're not travelling on trains, that people are interested in what's going on on our railway.
Thank you councillor Pals. Thank you. Councillor Heath, do you have a, a question or are you, have you got a report?
Yeah, well, it's not really a report, just an update. That's why there's no written parts. Just sort of let members know that our survey for the solar panels was scheduled for roughly the middle of January to come and see if the roof is suitable, et cetera. But that was before the lockdown. I haven't heard from them since, but as they are an essential building maintenance stroke, carbon saving, they will be allowed to do it, I believe. So it's just a question of arrangements, which maybe Andrew can nod right now or say no, that somebody can let them in to have a look. So subject to that, keeping social distancing, which I think probably should be able to do, but that would be also the chair of staffing to be involved in that. But if there are, they are able to do it, that would be great. But I think that it could, well, the date could slip. So we're going to have to wait and see, I'm afraid, like everything else.
Excellent. Thank you councillor Heath. Thank you. And then we've also got a report that has been circulated from councillor Tamlin. Thank you very much for, for that report. Councillor Tamlin, do you wish to, to speak about your reports? Please go ahead.
Just need to unmute councillor Tamlin. Just need to unmute.
Can, can you unmute, please councillor Tamlin? Thank you.
I'm sure you have all seen my report for the mental wellbeing and suicide prevention working group. I just want to give an update of it very briefly with two items discussed at our meeting last night. You remember, you may remember that when this group was formed, it was agreed by council that there would be up to four members of the public joining the group. This has not happened yet due to various lockdowns, et cetera. It was agreed with the town clerk that an article would go out for the town crier, but because they were only set out on, sent out on the website, again, this didn't happen. And there was therefore very little coverage, if anything, and there were no replies. The thoughts now are that it should go out in the local press and Dawlish Not News. And because this meeting is on Facebook, I would like to take the opportunity to request that anyone interested who's watching this programme in joining the working group, please contact the town clerk for an application form. Special skills or knowledge, qualifications or experience that you have acquired from previous employment or voluntary work in the, in this field would be an advantage, such as mental health, social work, nursing or support groups. The group meets once a month and because of COVID-19, the, the meetings are currently bound Zoom. Having had a successful year with a great deal of positive feedback from the public, we would like to continue. And a project was discussed at the meeting that we would like to pursue and we are very excited about it. It is on the lines of helping you to tackle loneliness. We're hoping to be more, to bring more details to full council in February for your approval. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much councillor Tamlin and thank you to all members of that working group for all the work that you put in. Thank you very much, Andrew. Please go ahead.
Thank you, chairman. I think there may have been a bit of a lost in translation message. The information about joining the group was included in the digital version of the town crier. So that has been made available on our website and was advertised on our Facebook page. But obviously the town crier hasn't gone out house to house. So those not able to access online wouldn't have seen it. But it has certainly gone out in the digital version. But as you know, we haven't had any responses yet.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you. Councillor Taylor, you've got your blue hand. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Really to, through you, Chair, to thank councillor Tamlin for her continuing good work with regard, with sitting as chairman of this, of this group. And I was, I was touched by the, what she encountered with a young member of the public stopping, stopping her on the strand to say thank you for saying thank you for the well, well, mental wellbeing poster. And, and concluding with, he also said that Dawlish has a real community, a town that cares. And I would certainly like to echo that. And it's good, it's good to get that sort of feedback. It's heartwarming. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Taylor. Thank you. So can we all approve or accept councillor Tamlin's report? Please, please raise a hand. Excellent, thank you. Okay, so moving on to item number 12 on the agenda, the statement of internal control, which has been circulated to note and readopt the town council's statement of internal control. So I'd like to say thank you to Andrew, our town clerk, for, for working on this and bringing it to the agenda. Um, and bringing it to the agenda. Um, Andrew, would you, would you like to, um, go ahead and speak on this item?
Yeah, thank you chairman. Hopefully the document's fairly self-explanatory. It just details the steps the council takes to ensure um, its financial controls are in place and how that is undertaken. It's pretty much um, a regurgitation of the previous version, except it has been updated because the um, governance and accountability method councils of practitioners guide has been revised in, in March of last year. So um, really that's the only bit that changes. Everything else remains the same. We've obviously got reference to us using the RBS um, accounting system, um, and the steps we take through internal audit, external audit and the role of F and GP and members of that committee coming in to check the reconciliation. So other than that, it's just for information and really what we work against.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Um, councillor Wiggley, um, you've got your blue hand raised. Please go ahead.
Uh, thank you chair. I'd just like to propose that we accept that as set out.
Thank you very much for that proposal. Um, councillor Morehards, please go ahead.
Thank you, madam mayor. Um, I would just like to say, um, that obviously this demonstrates that this council under the leadership of the clerk does take, uh, seriously our responsibilities regarding, um, the spending of public monies. And I just think it's, it's a good thing for us to be on something like Facebook where everyone can look at this and be reassured. Uh, and I would also be happy to second the proposal by councillor Wiggley.
Thank you. Okay. So, um, all those in favour of, um, accepting and re-adopting this statement of internal control, please raise a hand.
Thank you chairman. That's unanimous.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you. So item number thirteen, the Love Tinmouth and Love Dawlish website. Um, to receive a report and proposal to re-host using the surplus CIC monies um, as a joint venture with Tinmouth Town Council. Um, so you will have seen the, um, the report that has been circulated. Thank you very much. Um, and been able to read through that. Um, so, um, others, I see there's a couple of, um, blue hands raised. Um, so if these, if these are questions regarding this item, councillor Lousa, you're, you're top of the queue. Please go ahead.
Thank you, madam mayor. It's a question of, uh, translation, if you like. I like an explanation of the meaning of a, well, it's really one term used twice. Um, and that is re-host. The recommendation shown on the top in blue and, and heavy in bold. Um, talks about the funds being used to jointly re-host and redevelop the websites. And that phrase is repeated again somewhere further on, which goes about, on about re-hosting. Yes, it's in the, the middle paragraph with the way forward. It proposed that the two websites be re-hosted jointly by Dawlish and Tinmouth Town Councils. What does re-hosted mean precisely?
Uh, chairman, currently the website is hosted by a provider and at the moment it's been taken down. It's not been deleted or destroyed. It's being held in the bins, but it's hosted by a provider and it's our, well, the recommendation is and the intention is for those sites to be reinvigorated and then re-hosted. So they live again so that they can be used. But obviously they are now out of date and they're not GDPR compliant in some, in some areas. So we would need to go through that and bring it back up to date and then re-host it and, and make it available to the wider public.
Well, would that imply that there's just one website with two councils sharing it?
Yes.
Thank you very much, councillor Lousa for that question. And thank you, Andrew.
Now, can I finish for a moment? Excuse me.
Okay.
So that, so in fact, there will be one website which will be, which will be represent both Tinmouth and Dawlish. And who will run that website?
Chairman, if it's, um, appropriate, can I bring in the projects officer at this stage? He has had prior involvement.
Thank you. Thank you. Please go ahead, Angie.
Thank you. Um, it, it is one website, but there are two, what would you call domain names? Love Dawlish.co.uk and Lovetimouth.co.uk. And currently, originally, if, if we go back in his, in history, there were two websites.
Yeah.
One was purely Dawlish, one was purely Timoth. They came together as one. Um, and the main hosting of the website is through the one domain. Um, and, and it's one provider, as Andrew said, uh, the town clerk said currently. Um, but on that one site is information for both Dawlish. Um, it could be split into two, but it's obviously quite a big decision depending on the content. But currently, if you typed in lovedawlish.co.uk, if the website was up, you would be directed to love Tinmouth. But it would have all the Dawlish information on it and all the Dawlish branding, as well as all the Tinmouth branding.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Angie. Thank you. Okay. So we've got a couple more blue hands raised. If these are questions about this item, please. So, um, councillor Pals, please go ahead.
Uh, thank you, madam mayor. Um, I am taking this, uh, Andrew as, uh, as a gross, shall we say, from, uh, abortive meetings that councillor Linda Pedric and I had about eighteen months ago, when we were last in Bitten House, uh, into which certain, uh, Tinmouth councillors never bothered to turn up to a meeting to which we went. Um, I suspect that, uh, councillor Linda Pedric well remembers the occasion, as we were the two representatives of this council on a joint working together as this applies. Are we still proposing to work together? Because, um, it was very difficult and, and back in those days, uh, it would be even more difficult, I suspect now. Um, due to lockdown, but I would like this was brought to my attention today by somebody else. So I had to dig back into my mind because it actually, I think it was two thousand and nineteen when we had that meeting, when we were going to go forward and try and use this money to the benefit of both towns. So, um, I am concerned to know is it because, uh, for what reason has it, has it now re, uh, put its head up? Is it because the money, if we don't use this money, it will go back to Teambridge?
Um, well, chairman, as it says in the report in, uh, the first paragraph, um, these monies are held by Teambridge, albeit by the CIC's former counties because the CIC wound up and the articles of association for that group were such that any residue finances were to return to the district council, including any assets of which the website is one of the, the community screens or another. Um, you're correct, obviously last year and before that, we did have a working party with Tinmouth about the way forward, but that was in a much more strategic sense rather than project specific. Um, it's now um, being raised at Tinmouth and they considered it back in December that they would like to get those monies back to the two town councils and reinvigorate the websites because they were both hitting nine million people when they were live and up to date. So they're seen as quite a crucial asset going forward for both town councils. Um, and I think it's envisaged as well that if, if members were to approve this, as Tinmouth have, once the websites have been, um, got up and running, there will be an individual from both town councils managing their pages with a team of volunteers updating the regular information. So there wouldn't be such a staffing commitment um, as there may have been before. But we're not talking about reinvigorating the CIC. We're not talking about joint working with Tinmouth and having a joint committee, which was floated before. Uh, I think we've moved past that and we're looking at more individual projects that can be of benefit to both towns going forward.
Uh, thank, thank you for that. And, um, you know, it's, uh, we would like, I'm sure, as both towns to use that money rather than it to be swallowed up from, to Teambridge. So do we have to put a bid in to get the money back? Or will it automatically come to us if we approve this?
We have made it, or Tinmouth have already made a request to Tinmouth, uh, sorry, to Teambridge to recover the monies. Um, obviously, if, depending on the outcome tonight, if you were minded to approve it, then we would add our voice to that and request those monies to come back. And the idea is that those monies would be used to, um, reinvigorate the websites. It may be that a bit more is required, not a huge sum, I wouldn't imagine. Um, but it would certainly go a long way to being able to do that. Um, and if that was the case and it was back up and running again, it would be hoped that the advertisement income from that could even make the project cost neutral or realise an income for the council, albeit not massive, but it would be something. Um, so that's the goal. Um, but we don't see any reason why it should sit in Teambridge's coffers where actually the monies came from both to the, both town councils initially.
I completely agree. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you councillor Pals. Thank you Andrew. Okay. So, um, the next blue hand at the top, um, is councillor Heath. Please go ahead.
Thank you, um, madam mayor. Um, I think I would certainly endorse that we have our money back. Um, my only query is, it's quite a real one, is, um, how it comes back, whether it comes back into our, uh, bank account, split or Tinmouth's. And then we ask, ask them, just a sort of technical thing, but it does run on to quite important why I'm asking it. Um, because I'm looking for the minutes of the last meeting that we had. And it doesn't state anywhere that we decided to go with this. Um, so I think perhaps it's a bit premature to go this far, other than ask for the money back, which I think is definitely a good idea. Um, and I think really the working group should look one more time very quickly to see whether or not we want to do something separate or together. And unless my memory is bad, and I say I have looked for notes on this on a minute and it doesn't say that. Um, we didn't actually decide to sort of go ahead as a joint thing with Love Dawlish. But the last thing I remember is we put names and numbers, not numbers, but, uh, titles in for, for local sites and what we could call it. On, one, for example, was, uh, Dawlish, um, area tourism, Dawlish regional tourism and so on. And we were going to debate that at the next meeting, or we weren't able to do that. So we were going to debate it in the new year. And I, I think we should do that before we go to that in case we're all strongly against having a joint working website, whereas quite a few members might like a Dawlish one. And I'm not one worried to one way or the other, but I think we should debate it before just rubber stamping this, to be honest with you. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you councillor Heath. Um, Andrew, please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you chairman. Um, this hasn't come before council. Um, I believe councillor Heath is referring to discussions that took place within the tourism strategy working group about potential ways of working in lieu of the TIC option. Um, at the previous meeting that I was referring to was actually Tinmouth Town Council in December, where they considered the same item and approved the recommendations. Um, so it hasn't been before us. That's why it's with us now. Um, and we felt that bringing it last month wasn't appropriate, given the item that we were discussing at the time. Um, so that's why it's before members now.
Yeah. Can I just make a little?
Thank you, Andrew. Yes, I'm councillor Heath. Yes.
Yes, thank you for the follow-up point. Yeah, the point was Tinmouth might have, but we're Dawlish. And I think the appropriate pay, place for that decision, uh, is that the tourism strategy working group, then to come back with the approval, you were asking us to approve it at a general meeting uh, before actually the strategy group has actually said that's a good idea, unless I got that wrong. But that's how I see it.
Thank you councillor Heath. Um, projects officer Angie, please go ahead.
Uh, thank you, uh, chair. I, 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 I did attend a previous tourism strategy meeting and I thought right at the end of a previous tourism strategy meeting that councillor Mark, the deputy mayor, had made a, a comment, uh, of a proposal to do with Love Dawlish. Um, and, and progressing. And I thought that had been agreed. All, all I will say i- is that obviously the reason also this has come at this point is at a point in the year, each time the cost of the hosting and that has to be considered. Um, and both councils agreed last year to at least carry it forward. Because if councils do not pay for the domain name or the hosting, then it could be taken over by a third party. Um, I just want to say, I thought the deputy mayor might remember, or there was some comment made at a tourism strategy meeting, but I may be incorrect. I apologise if that is the case.
Thank you. Thank you, Angie. Okay. Um, we've got quite a few more blue hands raised. Councillor Pedrick, please go ahead.
Yeah, I, I do remember being with you, Roz, at that meeting. And I think when we were at the meeting, the, the money, this money actually belongs to the CIC, which is Dawlish and Tinmouth. And it can only be used for a, a joint project because that's what the CIC was. I might be wrong and Andrew will tell me if I am. And one of the things we looked at, because the website was so successful, um, we thought that it would be a good project to put that money into. Um, I don't think we can just say to Tin, Teambridge, we want half that money back because they won't give it you back because they don't have to give either one of us any of that money back because it was written in that they, they could take it back. Um, I mean, I, I think the website's quite, quite a good idea. So I wouldn't really have any problem with it. I mean, I don't have a problem with it going back to the tourism meeting, but I do think that as it was so successful before, I don't see any reason why we can't do it again. And I think it had a good impact on Dawlish. That's, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Pedrick. Thank you for those, those comments. And I, I, I quite agree with you because I remember how, how good the, the Love Dawlish website was when it was up and running. Uh, next in the blue hand queue is councillor Morehards. Please go ahead.
Thank you, madam mayor. Um, I'd like to take us a little bit back, further back, please, to fundamentals. Um, this council set up a tourism and strategy working group on the seventeenth of September. The remit was agreed at a meeting on the first of October. And it reads to develop a comprehensive long-term tourism strategy for Dawlish for approval by town council. To make recommendations to the town council on how to develop Dawlish into a destination brand. And lastly, to make recommendations to the town council concerning the delivery of a tourist or visitor information service. Now, the last item, we were obliged to rush through because there was a time constraint on our response, uh, and our dealings with Tinbridge District Council about the tourist information office. This, the group made a recommendation to the last meeting of this full council on, uh, I think it was December the sevens. I can't remember now. Uh, in respect of that, however, to the best of my knowledge, we haven't just discussed in detail what is actually on the table this evening. It's not a recommendation which come, has come from the tourism group. But it's clear that the tourism group is the, um, organisation, for want of a better word, which is supposed to be studying in detail any recommendations regarding tourism strategy. Following, um, a, a comment earlier on, the only way that we've touched on this, as I recall, is that we, after much research with other councils, um, and tourist information, um, offices and venues, we did, uh, discuss in outline that we needed to have, uh, a better online presence. We discussed in outline that, that the fact that we already have a town council website. And we did discuss in outline the actual logo, Love Dawlish. To the best of my knowledge, we did not discuss a joint one, Love Dawlish, Love Tinmouth. I would just like to, well, I would propose in fact that since it doesn't appear to be any emergency about this decision, and since the tourism group has another meeting on the fourteenth of January. and since the tourism group has another meeting on the 14th of January, that this be referred to the tourism group for detailed consideration, including um potential costs and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Morehead. Um, well, my um issue is that the Tourism Strategy Working Group is, the meetings are held at a very exclusive time. And when, right back when the meeting, the group started meeting, the meetings were decided to be held on a Thursday during, during working time. And so I have never, ever been able to attend any of the meetings due to my work at the hospital. Um, so I would not be happy with that, because I would not be able to have a say about, about this item. Anyway, next blue hand in the queue is councillor Wrigley. Please go ahead.
Uh, thank you, chair. Um, a couple of things really about this. If you have a website that's getting nine million hits, you want to make sure that you hold on to that domain and you hold on to that website. Because if that website is down and away for any length of time, you start to lose the rankings on Google, you start to lose the reputation on the internet as a site of reliable, a, a, a place to be, and it begins to fade. So you lose that traffic very, very quickly. It's substantially easier to take an existing setup and change it into something new. So yes, absolutely, I would encourage the tourism group to go away and determine what we want long term. But I think we would be making a mistake if we didn't keep this one up. It seems to have come down purely because the contract has run out on the hosting of it. Re-hosting the site and making the simple changes to make it GDPR compliant should be of minimal cost, and it will retain that critical presence on the web of the name Love Dawlish. Should we choose to move to do something different later? Fine, no problem whatsoever. But it seems a waste to throw this away that is here. So um I, I would actually propose differently. I'd propose that we accept this, that we put this up, but that we ask the tourism group to consider whether this is what we want long term and to come back with full recommendations as to what we do and what we might, uh where we might take this, if we wish to replace it or change it. But I would also ask that we get reports on the, regular reports on the performance of this site. How much traffic has it seen? How many hits has it seen? And we get those coming back in either to this council, full council, or perhaps to the FNGP group as sort of a regular sort of performance, a metric on it. But I would ask that we do make one technical change to the site, because last time I looked at it, when you looked up Love Dawlish, you almost instantly landed on a site that said Love Timmouth. And it's relatively straightforward to change that main site title into something that is either neutral or something that is specific to one or the other, depending on your route in. But other than that, it's an excellent site. You cannot sniff at nine million hits a year. You know, that, that's a substantial presence. And it would be a mistake to take this down and leave it down and to lose that uh built-up reputation, albeit within the algorithms of Google, the search engine, to uh direct people to this site, to tell them things about what's going on in Dawlish. So I think it would be a mistake to take it down and leave it down. But I do think that we should have a considered opinion and thought as to what we have in the long term, whether we keep it or replace it, because you're right, we haven't had that conversation. And I would be pleased to hear what the tourism group has to do that. But we don't need to take this site down to actually have that consideration, and it'll be easier to move forward if we bring the site back up.
Thank you very much councillor Wrigley, and thank you for your proposal, and I'm happy to, to support that. Um, councillor Dawson, please go ahead.
Um, I don't think I was first, but actually I was just going to second councillor Wrigley, and that's been done.
Thank you councillor Dawson. Thank you. Um, so are there any other councillors that haven't spoken that wish to speak? Okay, thank you. So um we, I'm, I'm keeping an eye on time, so we don't have a late meeting again. Um, do the councillors that have already spoken have something new to speak on? Okay, so councillor Louther, if it's something new, please keep it brief. Please go ahead.
I will keep it brief, madam mayor. The point of my question to start with was to open the discussion we've just had. Now, I've got no problem with taking the money back. I'm all for taking money back. I'm all for keeping the website going, and I appreciate councillor Wrigley's advice on that. Um, what I want to avoid is the idea of joint website. And I think that has come out clearly, that that's, there's a strong feeling for that in several members. Um, I'd be happy to take it back as chairman of the tourism subgroup to take it back. But I do think, I, I'm taking councillor Wrigley's advice. How can we get the money, keep the thing going, but yet still make up our own minds what we do with it?
Okay, thank you councillor Louther. Um, councillor Morehead, if it's something new, please go ahead.
Regarding the site being up or down, my understanding, and I'm sure I can be corrected by either our projects officer or our clerk, is that this website hasn't been working since the CIC was dissolved. Am I correct or not? And the second point is that I did make a proposal first, which I would hope would be seconded, um which should be dealt with before the second one. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Morehead. Um, Angie, would you like to go ahead?
Uh, thank you. It's not been down since the CIC dissolved or ceased to exist. It was maintained up until, I would say, six to, about six months ago by volunteers and keeping it up to date. It's been down since then. However, what is not down is the social media for Love Dawlish and Love Timmouth, um which also have a, have a presence with, with the website, um which the council may like to note, but it's, it's been about down about six months because there was an issue with some of the information on site. And obviously, with the pandemic situation, it didn't reflect all the changes in businesses, which has actually been done in a very different form on the Helping Dawlish site. But then we're in a very different set of circumstances to whichever that website was ever anticipated to have to deal with.
Okay, thank you very much, Angie. Thank you. Um, councillor Gabby Taylor, please go ahead.
Thank you, madam mayor. Um, yeah, I, I, in, in a way, I agree with the sentiment coming from members that we should have an individual website. But as I understand it at the moment, the, the Love Dawlish, Love Timmouth actually is individual to a degree. And there, there can be more pages that can be, can be built out on the Dawlish side and on the Timmouth side. But at the core of it is one website, which is very useful from the point of view of advertising. And I would suggest that actually having this twin website, as it were, um from that point of view is, is greater than the sum of individual parts. And from, from the point of view of, you know, attract, attracting advertising, I would suggest that we would be better off financially together with Timmouth hosting. Uh, Tim- Timmouth already, already appear to want to do that. And I would suggest that in the short term, yes, we do revitalise the uh, the, the website. I think, I think it's a great shame when, 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 if you were, considering the amount of good work that's gone into it, that, that, that the public can't see us at the moment. And for every, every month that it's out, it loses a bit of reputation for us and for Timmouth. So, so I think actually time is of the essence in, in this, in this regard. I'm sorry, I can't support councillor Morehead's proposal, but I will be supporting councillor Wrigley's proposal that we, that we, that we do as, as set out on, on, on. If that was your proposal, councillor Wrigley, I believe it was, um that, that I would support this, this proposal I set out. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you very much councillor Taylor. Um, Andrew, please, please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, chairman. I think councillor Taylor's stolen my thunder a little bit. Um, yes, essentially, it's one website subdivided into two. Um, and we know that there's a tweak that we need to change, that when you go to Love Dawlish, it says Love Timmouth. But as has been said, that's fairly easy to change. Um, obviously, at the current time, while there's a strong collaboration going on between the two town councils, we're in effect halving the, the cost to the council. Um, whereas if we were doing it on our own, we would have to bear the full cost. Um, I, Angie will be able to give the precise dates, but the website hasn't been in existence for a long time compared to many others. But in that short space, it's a relatively short space of time, nine million hits isn't to be sneezed at. It's certainly more than the town council gets, and I'd hazard a guess it's probably more than both Teambridge and the Devon County Council get together. Um, so we've obviously got a following. It's a known brand. It's Love Timmouth, Love Dawlish. You go and have a look, and then you go through the respective pages. So I don't think members need to become too tribal, is the way I'd describe it, because it's our pages, but we're sharing it. Um, and it's, and the only joint working is the fact that we're both sharing the cost to have that one page hosted. What we do with our, our page is ours to do as we please.
Excellent. Thank you, Andrew. Thank you. Councillor, councillor Woods, please go ahead.
Uh, evening. Just a short statement. Um, there's a few comments been made about us being part or joint with them. But I don't see the issue. If we get out of from Timmouth Shadow and show what we do have and what we do have to offer, it sells itself. Um, so we shouldn't be afraid or worried about Timmouth being on there. So I think, as has been stated, it will be our own in the end, or it will be under us. But we have a lot to offer as well, so let's not get put off by the word Timmouth in it. And we do have a lot to offer. We've got the Dawlish Beach Cam and stuff like that as well, and that's sound itself. That's all. Thank you.
Brilliant. Thank you very much councillor Woods. Okay, councillor Heath, um if you've got something new to add, please go ahead. Keep it brief.
I sure will. Thank you. Um, yes, I was going to actually second councillor Morehead's proposal, but I think with the clarification that's been made, that it won't really just be a joint one. It will actually be like two single ones joined together, which I know is a bit of a weird way of saying it, but it seems to be what is coming out of this. It does seem that we can own some of it, rather than it's sort of floating between the two. Because I know a few members and others want to do our, do our own, and I understand that. But if we do it jointly, it costs less, we get more hits, which is possible. As long as, this is where the devil is in detail, as long as we do make sure when the web design is done, that we have separate pages, separate links to each other. It doesn't, doesn't always come up as a literary joint. I think we could probably do it, but I still think it would need a bit of tweaking. And we must make sure we don't miss the detail. Otherwise, I'd be, be happy with that.
Thank you councillor Heath. Thank you. So we've got two proposals. We've got the proposal from councillor Wrigley um to, to accept this and go for it and to, to, to get these websites back up um so we can keep the nine million hits and rising. And we've got the proposal from councillor Morehead um against, against this and to take it back to the Tourism Strategy Working Group. So um I suggest that we go to.
Chair, if, if I may, I don't think councillor Morehead's proposal was seconded. So we have only my proposal on the table at the moment, if that's all right.
Right, okay. Councillor Morehead, do you wish to say something?
So I would like to clarify what I said. I agree, it wasn't seconded. But I would just like to make the point that I have not been making any remarks about it being a joint or not the, one way or the other. My point is that a working group was set up to study tourism strategy, and we have not studied this. So are the recommendation has not, it's not been discussed in detail by the Tourism and Strategy Group. And it is not the recommendation which normally comes from a working group to a town council. And we haven't got any costings, by the way, on this. Uh, so we, which is something that would be gone into if it's through a tourism group. I just want, I don't want people to be under the misunderstanding that I personally would be against it per se. I'm just saying that it has not been gone into in detail by a strategy group, a working group, which was set up specifically to study tourism strategy. Um, and it might well be that after further discussion and, and information, that the group did make a recommendation along these lines. But that is the way it normally happens. It's not happened this way. That's the only thing. That was my point. Not against in anything per se. It was process. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Morehead. Andrew, please go ahead.
Um, chairman, I'd just like to maybe ask the projects officer. Um, obviously, the two town councils agreed to re-host or to continue having the, the websites hosted. How long would that long, uh last for? And do we know a rough estimation of the cost? And presumably, once those websites were reinvigorated, they would then continue until the next point that comes along to re-host them. Is that right?
Yeah, at the, at the moment, the, we pay a domain cost, which I think is due biannually for the two domain names. And I think last year, when the hosting was renewed with the current provider, it was around £240, £250 that we paid for the year for the hosting. So that it would be an annual cost, and your domain cost is probably biannual. Um, and then obviously, if you were paid to have content updated, does that answer your question, Andrew?
Yes, I, I think that's useful. And obviously, we've paid for presumably two years' worth of subscription, if you like.
We've paid, paid two years. I think domains aren't up until next year, but the hosting is up in June with the current company this year. I'd have to double check, but I think my understanding.
Yeah, so, you know, the, the, the monies that we're talking about in the scheme things are not huge and should be adequately covered by the monies that were due to receive back from Teambridge. Um, uh, and yes, it could then go through the tourism working group to be tweaked. Uh, it has certainly been discussed at the Tourism Strategy Working Groups, as Angie has told us, that the hits of, the nine million hits, that she had been involved in a private capacity in helping to manage those pages. And certainly, as an alternative to having a TIC building and a physical presence, the alternative was a website with a much wider offering. So it's certainly been in the sphere of our, our knowledge that it's something we might like to do. So it's a known brand, it's worked, it's been very successful. It would be, in my view, a shame for the two town councils to lose that. But, um, you know, that's obviously for members to consider.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you. Councillor Wrigley, you've got your blue hand raised. Um, if you have something new to say, please go ahead.
Uh, thank you, chair. Yes, just to clarify, whilst we buy hosting for a year and we buy the domain name for a period of two years or whatever it may be, at any point in that time, we can choose to point the domain name to something new. We can choose to take that site down and re-host it somewhere else. We can choose to do anything that we like. And like councillor Morehead, I would very much welcome the input from the tourism group as to what our strategy should be. Uh, but we build from what we've got, as opposed to taking it down and throwing it away and trying to start from scratch.
Thank you councillor Wrigley. Thank you. So we have a proposal from councillor Wrigley, which I, which I seconded. Um, so could I take a vote for that, please? For all those in favour um of supporting this, please, please raise your hand now.
It's eleven, chairman.
Okay, thank you. Those against it, please raise a hand. Any abstentions?
Two, I believe.
Okay.
So that's passed.
So that's passed. Okay. Thank you councillors. Thank you for your discussion. Moving on then to item number fourteen, the draft interim, interim Devon Carbon Plan. So this is to consider submitting a response to Devon County Council's consultation on the draft interim Devon Carbon Plan, um which needs to be received by the fifteenth. which needs to be received by the fifteenth of February this year, a few weeks' time. So you will have seen the document, the link to the document as well, which has been circulated with our papers. There's the website that links to the very, very full, very well-written carbon plan. It's a big document. I've started looking through it. I wonder if other councillors have, have had a chance to look through it and read all these suggestions and the plans. My, my suggestion is that each council may wish to submit their individual response. I know I will be submitting my individual response to this. And then I was thinking that, to suggest that as a, as a town council, we ask our Climate Change Working Group to, to look at this and to formulate and a response to go from us, from the Dawlish Town Council. So to suggest that councillor Heath and the Climate Change Working Group look at submitting our group response. So up to councillor Heath, if you, you've got your blue hand raised, would you wish to comment on that?
Yes, I thought you might nub me on that one. Well, basically, you're right. It's a very long document. I've read about eighty-five, ninety percent of it. It's well over forty odd pages. Some of it's detailed, some of it's common sense. But for members who haven't gone through it, I think a couple of startling things is that if we were to try to get zero carbon by 2050, which is one of the plans, it will cost each rate power £661 extra per year to do that. And then lots of us want it to be 2030, and this is a scary bit. That will cost each rate power, rate pair, extra each year £1,992, nearly £2,000 extra. So you see, the struggle is colossal and it can't be looked at lightly. If we do do this and we were to look at it with a group, I think I need to co-opt a few extra people to come and help. Because sometimes we don't always have a full, full amount, and that's like three people, and it's just too much. If we were to do a joint one, and I agree, we should do an individual one. If we do a joint one, which is what the proposal is, I don't mind sort of helping to coordinate it, certainly not do it on my own. I've got a few suggestions and we could put something together. The other members are happy with that, to do a joint response. But it would only be very, very broad outline because obviously we can't answer forty pages or so, just the strategy. A lot of the strategy, by the way, is ideas and what they want to do. It's a little bit short on how they're going to do it, which is a problem. So we'd have to decide whether we try to address that, which would be very technical, so probably not. Or whether we just give some more outlines of encouragement. And I've got a couple of points which I would raise. I'll just raise one with you now and I stop. This is, this is the dilemmas. Lots of people don't realise that the boilers are going to be stopped within a few years. It won't be gas or oil, it will be heating of some kinds, normally a heat exchange unit with ground or air source heat. But that's fine on an eco house, that's nearly a hundred percent insulated. But we're talking about all the existing housing stock, and even nine-inch brickwork, which is very, very cold. It's not going to work, as far as I can see, because it will not be warm enough for the house, it will still be cold. So they haven't even decided, you know, this is not a government decision, how they're even going to overcome this. So it's not for us to have anything to answer those questions. It's just give a broad reply to Devon to encourage them. We've got over half a million houses and business premises that needs to be done. There's only three major towns, Torbay, Exeter and Plymouth, where the thing happens. And about ninety percent of Devon is rural, which is agriculture. So we're very mixed here. All those areas have got to be looked at and they are looked up in this report. It's a very good report. I think we might not be able to change very much or add very much because it is such a good report. But I think we should have a go, a stab at pointing out that they need to go. My point is eco homes now. Planning on our own council with act, least the change. We shouldn't be building any more normal homes, they should all be eco. Because the old standard just won't do it, it just will not work. If you don't understand what I mean, I'd be happy to take a sort of a question on that, why it wouldn't work. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Heath for your, for your thoughts and for, for looking at these documents and for your suggestions as well. Andrew, you've got your hand raised. Please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, chairman. Just very briefly, it's just a matter of technicality. Obviously, the working group doesn't have any decision-making powers. But if members were keen to delegate authority to myself to respond in consultation with councillor Heath and the Climate Declaration Working Group, which we have now sought dates for an initial meeting this year. And obviously, that would tie in quite well, but it was just to clarify on that.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Councillor Morehoods, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, two, two questions really. One for the clerk. If we respond as individuals, presumably if the council then, as advised, I trust by the Climate Change Working Group, and that's my other question in a moment. If the council is, is going to send in, if you like, a group, a council response, then presumably we can also reply as councillors, only as individuals.
Yeah, you would be responding as members of the public, essentially.
That's right. I just wanted confirmation. Thank you. And councillor Heath, could you just list for me, please? Because it's a while since we had a meeting. The, the members of the climate change group, because you were saying you needed help. I believe we've got quite a few members to start with, but it would be useful if you named us so that, you know, it's clarified.
Oh, the mute didn't go. Right, we're okay. Let's see if I can remember it all for this time. There's councillor Goodman Bradbury, there's Rosie Dawson, myself. Now, who was the other one? Linda, wasn't it? Was it Linda? Lyn, Lyn, sorry. Yes, yes. I've got it right anyway. Lisa Mayne, I think you were on it, weren't you? Am I right on that or not? You weren't on in the end. All right, okay. Well, that shows how, how rusty we're all getting. And there were a few co-opted ones, which, to be honest with you, after the first couple of meetings, they sort of didn't turn up. They put a good, a good bit in, said quite a few things, but they weren't, for whichever reason, able to carry on coming to it. So it would be great if either, if, if they don't, or at least a few more of our councillors, as we're going to try and do a joint council response, could perhaps volunteer to join that next soon to, to, to help put it together. I think that would be the best. Then we can have that final meeting with the clerk to sort out exactly what we say in the statement. I'm hoping the statement will be short, because otherwise, you know, where do we end up? It's just got to be an encouragement and a few suggestions, as I have already pointed out.
Thank you very much councillor Heath. Thank you. Andrew, would you like to go ahead?
Yeah, chairman, it was just to, it was just to confirm, the members are actually listed on the council's website. And the young working groups are listed committees. But for information, it's councillors Heath, Goodman Bradbury, John Pedrick, Linda Pedrick, and Exefisior Maynes, councillor Foden and councillor Moore.
Of course, those ones, yeah.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you. Councillor Pedrick, please go ahead. Councillor Heath, just to let you know that the two ex-members of the public, which I think was Vanessa Riley and Sue Hill, they never got invite, they never got a second invite, they never got an invitation. So maybe if you could put them back on the list, back on your email trail. Because they, they both approached me and asked if it had stopped.
Right. Well, they never took them off, so I don't quite know what happened on that one.
If you can just add them back into it.
Right, okay. Chairman, they should have received an invitation to complete the doodle poll as members did earlier. But if they've got any problems, if they can just let me know, I'll make sure that they get that.
I'll check with them.
Yeah, that would help.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, thank you. So could I ask for a show of hands then, from all councillors, for approval that the, that we ask the Climate Change Working Group to, sorry, the Climate Emergency Working Group to formulate a response for our town clerk to respond. And also for individual councillors to submit a response personally. Could I ask for a show of hands, please? All those in favour? Thank you. Any against? Any abstentions? Excellent. Okay. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. So moving on then, please, to item number fifteen. The schedule of meetings for the next, for the next council year. So this is from, starting in May, May twenty twenty-one through to next year. So this has been circulated with our packs. It all looks very good. But I note that the times of the meetings aren't included. And I wonder then, does that mean that I'll be able to attend some of the meetings that I've never been able to attend, like the Manor House and Riverside Committee meeting? Is that in the daytime or is that in the evening at seven o'clock?
It is at two o'clock mostly, chairman. But if the committee wanted to change the, the time, then that would be in the gift of the committee. Generally, meetings start at seven, but I believe that one was to start in the daytime so that officers weren't attending too many evening meetings.
Right, okay. Would it be possible for the documents to be re-circulated with the times as well? Please, is, I, I noticed it because I was thinking, oh, I know there's meetings that I can never get to because of my working hours and, you know, I feel excluded. Would it be possible to re-circulate it with the times of the meetings included?
Yes, certainly. I mean, if members were to continue with the meeting times as they are now, then it would be all meetings starting at seven o'clock, save for Staffing and Manor House and Riverside Committee, which will start at ten AM, oh, sorry, nine thirty AM and two PM respectively. But I can recirculate that with the times if that's what members agree to.
Right, okay. Thank you. Thank you. It's just that for those two committees, the, the times that they have been during, when they've been during the daytime have excluded working councillors like me and councillor Dawson. So it'd be, be nice if they could be rejigged to the evening. But I do understand that it also takes up officers' time, so. I know you can't, you can't please everybody all the time. Okay, so there's quite a few councillors with blue hands raised. Councillor Prowse, you're first to go ahead. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Going back to the point that you've just made, which is not what I wanted to say, is that we have always to be conscious of our staff meeting outside office hours and the cost of it for the council. It's very unfortunate if we have a working mayor and deputy mayor who are, try to go to every meeting, but it has never been possible for us all to get to every meeting. What I did want to say is, and I sent you all an email, I do not think that the first meeting, this one in the year 2022, should be this Wednesday. It should be, as it has been for many years, when the, when we've fallen like this. It should be the second Wednesday of January and not the first Wednesday of January. I sent you all an email, so you should all be aware of this. It is not practical. And I would like to propose that we do go, in this particular case, because of the way the dates of Christmas and New Year fall in that year, that we have the second Wednesday in January of the year 2022. Yes, I'm making that proposal. If somebody would second me, I'd be grateful. Thank you, John, thank you, John Ped, councillor John Pedrick.
Thank you councillor Prowse. Thank you. And I, I do approve of that as well. We'll come to that vote in a minute. There's a couple of more blue hands raised. Councillor Morehoods, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I understand the problem that councillor Prowse has highlighted for us. I would just point out that, bearing in mind also the request by Madam Chair about the Manor House and Riverside meetings being in evenings. We have two problems on this list then, in that case. The September twenty-one, we've got, no, we haven't got one there. We're going to have it if we change, as agreed, which sounds sensible, for twenty-two, January. We're then going to end up with two, are we not, on Wednesday, the twelfth of January? So the Manor House, presumably, unless it started at five o'clock and ran on into the other one, that's going to cause another problem. It's not an easy one to resolve.
Thank you councillor Morehoods. Thank you.
Might I, might I just also say that when you look at these lists, I hope it brings home to the members of the public how much work this council does. And this does not even include all the meetings of the, I think, five altogether working groups. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Morehoods. Councillor Martin Wiggley, you're next with the blue hand. Please go ahead.
Thank you very much. I was, I was only going to suggest two things. First of all, if you always have the time of the next meeting decided by those people who can attend a given meeting at a particular time, then you will work out that you always exclude some people who can never be there to vote for the time because they're working. And if we have at the same time next month, then they'll be excluded then. So it is important that we are inclusive and encourage working people as well as people who are more flexible with their time to be able to be on the council. I'm, I'm not sure where we're going. I'd be happy to have the meetings in the evening. But if we want to compromise, perhaps we should say that some of those meetings are in the evenings and some of those meetings could be other times. So it doesn't have to be entirely one or the other.
Thank you councillor Wiggley. Next councillor to speak, councillor Mary Lother, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I've just come in as the bottom of the list because most of what I was going to say has been already been said.
Okay, thank you councillor Lother. Councillor Mayne, please go ahead.
I'm confused now because I didn't realise councillor Morehood has just said about the Riverside meet, Manor House Riverside meeting maybe having to start at five when it clashes with the seven o'clock meeting. I didn't realise it would be, it was being moved from two o'clock.
I, I think councillor Morehood was drawing attention to if it did change.
Right, okay, right, that's fine. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Mayne. Thank you, Andrew. Councillor Morehoods, please go ahead.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. In the case of January twenty-two, which is the problem area which councillor Prowse drew our attention to, if, if the full council meeting is changed to the following week, which I agree it should be, we then have the Manor House and Riverside and Full Town Council on the same day. However, generally speaking, we avoid Mondays and we avoid Fridays. So there is room for manoeuvre. If there is a clash like that particular month, I would suggest that one or other takes place on the Monday or the Friday. And that would, we can accommodate them all. It's just a nuisance sometimes because we do like some time off. But it is possible to, to move one around. But I agree with councillor Prowse, January twenty-two, that will be a potential logjam with bank holidays and so forth.
Thank you very much councillor Morehoods. So first of all, I'd like to, councillor Prowse's proposal for So first of all, I'd like to, councillor Prowse's proposal for changing the date of the first full council meeting in 2022 to a week later on Wednesday, the 12th of January. I'd like to put that forward for councillors to vote on. So that's proposed by councillor Prowse. So all councillors in favour of moving it to a week later, please raise a hand. Excellent. Excellent. Thank you very much. Thank you. Councillor Taylor, you've got your blue hand raised. Please go ahead quickly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I have noticed that the planning meeting of, there's a planning meeting arranged for Thursday, the 30th of December. I'm just wondering how practical that might be, Madam Mayor.
Right, okay. Thank you. Well spotted.
I think, chairman, that has snuck in when our administration officer has been planning a planning meeting every two weeks. So I think that can be struck through.
Okay, thank you. So we won't have one just before New Year, New Year's Eve. Okay.
Could I suggest in that case that an alternative date of the 6th of January instead would be more practical?
Thank you councillor Taylor. Thank you. I'll ask our town clerk to check with the finance officer if that would be suitable for that planning committee. Thank you. Thank you. So is that another question from you councillor Morehood? Please go ahead then.
Having agreed that we move the full council meeting from Wednesday, the 5th to Wednesday, the 12th, it then clashes with Manor House and Riverside. So we would need to decide whether the Manor House and Riverside takes place on a Monday or a Friday or stays at a morning meeting for that particular day or afternoon, whatever the chair of that committee decides.
Thank you councillor Morehood. Thank you. Andrew, do you wish to go ahead?
Yeah, just on that point, obviously, as it stands, the Riverside, the Manor House Riverside Committee would be at two. The council would be at seven. Generally, the Manor House Riverside Committee falls on the same day as, I believe, CAC. So it's not uncommon that you have two committees on the same day, but there is five hours between them. And as Manor House happens bimonthly, it's not too much of a regular occurrence. But obviously, the complication does arise if the times are changed.
Okay. Thank you, Andrew. Thank you. Was that everything councillor Morehood? Okay.
Yep. Can I?
Go on then. Go ahead.
I can't unmute myself, can I?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead. Go ahead councillor Morehood.
But the point was that the mayor, the chair of this committee, had asked whether we could have Manor House and Riverside, generally speaking, meetings in the evening to enable people who work to attend them. So that's why I brought up the clash, because we had already, I thought, acknowledged that that was an obvious thing to do. It just happens in that particular case that it might have to be that the Manor House and Riverside that day meets earlier in the day and not in the evening. I thought we'd already acknowledged that it ought to be in the evening. I may have got the wrong end of the stick, but I thought that was what the chair had proposed.
I mentioned it. Thank you councillor Morehood. I suggested it. But I do realise, especially after the chair of staffing councillor Prowse highlighted that there are difficulties for the council officers and these meetings all take up so much of their time. So I do realise that it isn't always possible. So we've got now to approve the list of meetings then with that amendment, those two amendments that we've voted on for the January meeting. And then if the list of meeting dates could be issued with the times. So can we go ahead and vote for that? Or councillor Pedderick, have you got something quick to say? Please go ahead. We're running out of time. Please go ahead. And one of the things I was going to say, that sometimes day meetings are necessary because if you want people to come to your meetings to give presentations, they only work in the day and they don't want to do evening meetings. Thank you. Thank you councillor Pedderick. Thank you. Okay, so if we can now vote to accept this list of meeting dates with the changes that we've mentioned already and to ask that it gets issued with the times, please raise a hand to approve.
That's unanimous, chairman.
Excellent. Thank you councillors. Thank you. Okay, so we've now come to the end of part one of our meeting. So we are now approaching part two. And members are recommended to approve the following resolution, please. That in accordance with the Public Bodies Admission to Meetings Act 1960, the press and public be excluded from the meeting for the duration of the following items on the basis that the informations that be disclosed would be prejudicial to the public interest by reason of the confidential nature of the business to be transacted. Therefore, please, can I ask for a show of hands from the councillors to accept that and that we now move into part two? Please raise a hand.
That's unanimous, chairman.
Thank you. So I will ask, I will thank all members of the public who have been watching our meeting this evening and members of the press. Thank you for being with us this evening. This is where we now say goodbye to you because we're moving into part two of the meeting. Thank you and take care. Goodbye.